February 10, 2025, the Order of the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence, please. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Wrong glasses. Vanez.
Here.
Calwinski. Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, eight, seven, wait a minute, seven present, one by electronically, and one absent, Councilman Calwinski, who by the way is, did say he's ill today, he called in and he wasn't going to be here, so, thank you. Mayor?
Thanks, Councilman. My mayor's report for February 10th, I want to thank everybody in the audience. There's a large presence of supporters of the Governor's Parkway Bridge here, and they've been here since 4:30, so I want to thank everybody. There's literally hundreds of people behind me, and there's more people out in the hallway trying to get in right now, so, we're at capacity in the council chamber, and I just want to thank everybody that showed up, because I know the council, over the last few months, couple months, whatever, has been seeing green shirts out there, and it was looking like they were the only ones that ever talked about this proposal, Governor's Parkway Bridge, there's a resolution before you today, and today, we have a lot of supporters packed in the council chamber, so thank you for being here. I know that's up for an agenda item later on, so the Governor's Parkway Resolution's going down today. We also have the CCBG budget up for approval, third and final today, and a Section 108 loan for the sportsplex, the sportsplex expansion is up for approval tonight as well. Section 108 loans, a loan from the federal government that's helping us with the expansion of the sportsplex, by the way, so that's a real good, a real good project that you all are considering today as well, so thank you for that. I want to report to the council, I'm sure you're aware of this by now, I wasn't here at your last council meeting, but all negotiations between all unions is wrapped up, all unions have four-year deals under their belt, everybody appears to be happy, as happy as you can be, so, I'm pretty happy about that. I want to thank you, thank the council for the support during the negotiations, thank my negotiating team, my Chief of Staff, Scott, as well as the unions that we bargained with, I think it was a really professional year for us. I wanted to report to the council that if it's not actually today, within the next day or so, the city of Hammond will be officially the owners of the haunted house site located off of Calumet and 8094, that we are in the process of writing the checks, so, we are, Councilman Emerson, if we're not the official owners today, it'll be probably tomorrow, the day after, the city of Hammond will be the official owner of that site, we will be putting it out for RFP, we will be marketing that site, looking for an impactful development in the 4th district that we could be proud of here, so, congratulations, Councilman Emerson. 4925 Soul Avenue, there's been a flurry of activity on this location recently, for those of you that aren't aware, it's a own Spone School site, I've been communicating with Councilman Salinas about a lot of interest in that site, it appears that the First Baptist Church has made the decision to sell that site to Highland Christian School, and Highland Christian School has big plans, they want to expand their presence here in the city of Hammond, I think that's a blessing for our city. Obviously, the Spone School site was used by the Baptist Church for a long time, and it sat relatively, I mean, underutilized, and I'm not going to say vacant, but underutilized for a long time. Scott, I believe that's the same group that owns Illiana Christian, is that true?
There are multiple groups looking to come together.
But it's all like the same family of?
Illiana, Crown Point, and Hammond.
This is a group that has money and the ability to get things done, and they're looking strategically at this Spone School site as a possible expansion of their mission in Hammond, I think that's a positive. We do have an economic development project that we had for that piece of property, I think that we could still make that happen, and that's our challenge right now, is there's two companies that are interested in building in the city of Hammond, they're looking at about $100 million investment, they wanted this piece of property, obviously, that's not going to happen at that location, but I think we could still make that happen, Councilman Salinas, that's my mission, so that we don't have to say no to those two companies, okay? Okay, but I think it's a positive that Highland Christian's coming, but I think we could do two positives, so, that's the goal. So anyway, mayor's activity log, I met with Bill Gustafson, who's the CEO of Horseshoe Casino Hammond, we had a couple meetings over the last couple weeks regarding complaints I received from a resident during mayor's night out, he called me, I didn't call him, I was confronted at mayor's night out about what's going on at Horseshoe Casino by a resident at mayor's night out, and Bill reached out to me and wanted to talk to me, and I'll report back to the council once we've had, I have a meeting coming up with the CEO of the parent company, so. Met with Hammond Fire Department Chief and the Deputy Chief regarding open battalion chief positions, interviewed three captains in the Hammond Fire Department in regard to the open battalion chief position, and made the following decisions, we appointed Chris Turton, who is a 32-year veteran of the, who is a battalion chief in the Hammond Fire Department, we promoted Chris Turton to Assistant Chief, we promoted Captain Brian Robson, who's a 27-year veteran, who went from Senior Captain at Station 1 to North Battalion Battalion Chief, and we promoted Ryan Aguiano, a 20-year veteran that went from Battalion Chief to the Assistant Chief Drill Master. Congratulations to those three firefighters, and thank you for devoting your career to the city of Hammond, protecting us while we sleep. Met with East Chicago Mayor Anthony Copeland over the last couple weeks regarding an item of shared interest between our water departments, and it was a very positive meeting, I haven't talked to Mayor Copeland in a long time, he came to Hammond City Hall, it was a very pleasant meeting, and I'm willing to talk to the council more about that when I'm not on the record, but it's interesting idea that we're exploring with a neighboring mayor, so. Met with Pastor Wilkerson, obviously, lots going on with the church, I indicated the Spone School property, Pastor Wilkerson and I had a couple meetings about that, I want to thank him for working with us on that whole process. Met with the Hammond Utility Chiefs in regards to the new President of the United States and the effect of this administration's change on the Hammond Sanitary District as well as the Hammond Water Department. Had lunch with Mayor Spewar from Whiting to catch up and work out issues between our cities, I'm sorry, this is a lot, but I've had a lot going on. Attended mayor's night out in the 1st district, I'm trying to go faster. Breakfast with Chancellor Ken Holford from Purdue Northwest, he was telling me about the new dorm that's going to be going in the 5th district, Councilman Warple, multimillion-dollar investment by Purdue Northwest, another dorm that they want to do there, he was telling me about that. Also, wants to talk to us about Dalian Park, Purdue's interest in Dalian Park is strong, they are desiring a permanent presence in that park, so that's something that we're going to have to grapple with, I imagine, pretty soon. Read to Ms. Rachel Sterzik's first grade class at Jefferson Elementary School, I do that every year for her, touched base with Councilman Janet Vanez regarding a variety of topics, met with the police captains in a monthly meeting like I always do, held meetings with planning, zoning, inspections, code enforcement, building departments, NAHDM, and economic development on Councilman Mark Calwinski's favorite address, 3141 St., we had a high-level meeting based on the councilman's complaints, and I know that address like off the top of my head, and that's not good for that address, we have a meeting with the owners of that property coming up shortly. Had breakfast with Councilman Barry Tyler on a variety of topics applicable to Hammond's 3rd district, attended Hammond's annual Black History Celebration at the Hammond Civic Center, attended and played in Hammond's Employee Olympics, I want to thank the council people that showed up that day, my team took 3rd place, Hammond Fire Department wins every time, and they did again, they keep the streak alive, and attended the Whiting-Robertsdale Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner at the Dynasty Banquet Hall, I want to congratulate Ron Novak, who was selected by the Whiting-Robertsdale Chamber of Commerce as the Public Servant of the Year, and Ron's right there in the front row, so thank you. That makes up for the fact I left the meeting early, so, congratulations, I want to thank Ron, I want to thank everybody for being here, I want to thank the council most of all, sorry about the long report, that's all I got, unless you have any questions.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I do have a question. With ICE agents being just across the border, how are we anticipating handling that here in Hammond?
Thank you, ma'am. I've actually, the police captains meeting I do with the police, we actually brought that up this week, talking about how the Hammond Police are going to respond to ICE requests, and, so, I'm glad you asked that, first off, this is a tough question, if the DEA came to the Hammond Police Department and needed the Hammond Police Department's assistance, or the FBI came to Hammond Police Department and needed the Hammond Police Department's assistance, and they were trying to get a bad guy, we would assist them, that's what we do, just like if ICE comes up to the Hammond Police Department with a specific request, trying to get a bad guy out of our city, Hammond Police Department will help them, Councilwoman. However, Hammond Police Department will not go on hunting expeditions, we're not going to go fishing, looking for people, if there is a specific target that ICE, or the DEA, or federal investigations, or any federal agency, they have a specific target, they have an identity, a location, all the necessary paperwork, we'll help them, like we do with all federal agencies, but we're not going to go fishing.
So in other words, criminals?
Yes, ma'am. We're not going to be going into schools, if ICE agents do that, I don't believe they've done that, but if that's the way they're going to go, we're not going to be part of it, I promise you that, we're not going to be, if they want to get bad, bad people, felons, violent criminals out of our cities, I have no problem helping with that, and I know the police chief and the administration's comfortable with that as well, we, I'm glad you asked that, Councilman, we talked about that this week, so, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Which, what details can you share with us at this time about the Highland Christian?
I don't want to screw up the deal, but I think it's very encouraging, Councilman, I think the First Baptist Church at Spone School, they were, it was a very underutilized piece of property, there's room for a lot more students there, I think that a well-funded organization like Highland Christian could fix the school up and make the necessary improvements to attract a large number of students, and with the voucher laws being the way they are in Indiana, a kid could go to that school for free, and I imagine it's going to be a high-quality school, so, as the mayor, I feel good about what we're doing as mayor, because my job is to provide a city that's livable, right, I understand that school city may not love this development, I understand that, right, but as a mayor, we're giving options to our, to our residents, we're giving other options, and this is, it's a proven school with a great track record, so.
Would this just be the high school level of grades?
Last I heard, Scott, I think it's K through 12, if I believe.
To begin with, they're looking at elementary and then building up from there to high school as well, but they're also now looking to start this coming fall a whole year and a half from now.
Would they be expanding that building, would they look into expanding it, or are they just going to operate in current?
I believe Spone can hold 1,400 students, so, like, there's no need to do expansion, but fixing it up, absolutely, roof is, there's places where you can see daylight where the roof is right now, so, yep.
And Councilman, if it is going to be a school that offers athletics, you know, there's room there to grow, but they would need our cooperation from the city as well, so, it's not like they could operate in a vacuum without coming to the Hammond City Council or to the mayor, so we'll have our chance to ask questions and get answers and give our input in this process, Councilman.
Thank you.
And it's already zoned to school, school for school, so, they could buy it for a school, we don't have to rezone it, but they're going to need our help, and I have a feeling this is going to be a good group to work with, I think you're going to be impressed as the 2nd district councilman. Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions or comments for the mayor?
I apologize about the length, but there's a lot going on, I just want to be transparent with you all, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on any farther, for those of you that are new, there's a sign-in sheet if you want to speak during public expression, you're allowed three minutes to say whatever you want, we can't respond, and in previous meetings, there's been a lot of applause and noise made during the meeting, and I want people to understand, nobody is here to not listen to what you got to say, but the applause and the disruption of meeting, we'll try to stop it, and if it continues, we'll just ask the police to, people that don't want to follow the rules, to kindly remove them. It's not that we're trying to keep anybody from speaking, it's, there are rules for a public meeting, and this is a public meeting.
Mr. President? Go ahead. Sorry, I do have, I do have one question for you, sorry. Just following up on Councilman Vanez's question around ICE, I know that we're not legally required to assist with immigration if there's not.
President. 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 President.[1049.01]
Included additional parking along the parkway and the bike path construction. This was awarded to United Consulting in the amount of $16,800. The second funding allocation, number 231, was a general's engineering service contract with NICE Engineering in the amount of $60,000. This is a service contract that includes a lot of different drainage solutions. That was all from the Capitol Improvement Board.
Thank you. Any other?
President?
Mr.
Counselor Hall will bring out 2501.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Community watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, February 12th, 1:00 P.M. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, March 5th, 6:30 P.M. at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, March 4th, 6:00 P.M. at the VFW across from Harrison Park. Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the HC3 Community Center on Thursday, February 20th, 6:00 P.M. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, February 11th, 9:30 A.M. at Irving School. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, February 13th, at Calumet College, beginning at 6:30 P.M. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will not meet until April. They have semi-annual meetings, so just put a checkmark on your calendar for April. As usual, I urge everyone to attend a community or crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood and how you can protect your family and your property. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vanez. Does anybody else have anything under committee reports? Anybody else have anything under committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine.
Ordinance number 25-01, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of the planned proceeds for program year 2025.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
What's the final passage of 2501?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Appropriate the CDBG, the home, and ESG budgets. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing no more. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, motion carries eight in favor, one absent.
President Warpo, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, deduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance number 25-02, sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Tyler, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of a Section 108 guaranteed loan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of loan proceeds for program year 2025.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
What'd you say? Yeah. Move for first and second reading. Counselors as a whole, the meeting set for February 24th, 2025, public hearing for February 24th, 2025, at 5:15.
Second.
So the council as a whole, committee hearing is at 5:15. The public hearings during the meeting. Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, just want to add a little bit more information about what the loan will be for. It's for the expansion of the sportsplex, and I'm guessing, Mayor, you want to discuss?
You can do it.
Um, well, no, I would love for you to share more about what the expansion will include.
Sure, I have no problem. I'll wait for you to.
No, I just wanted to share that that's what the ordinance is for.
It's around a $10 million expansion, Councilman. I know that the Section 108 loan's probably 40% to 50% of the total cost. The other cost is earmarked out of the food and beverage tax revenue that we're getting currently. So this will pay for the entire expansion. Obviously, the sportsplex is doing fantastic. Our volleyball, basketball, soccer programs are exploding. Over half of all the kids in those programs are Hammond residents. I know that's not all Hammond residents, obviously. It's a big sportsplex, but over half of the kids that participate in those programs are Hammond residents. It's exploding. Obviously, it's done so well that the YMCA chose to move right next door, and the YMCA is doing so well that we're getting economic development opportunities over there that are sort of outside of the box. I have one on my desk right now that I can't really talk about at this time, but it's stuff that we've been talking about for a long time. So I think that whole area of theirs is doing fantastic, Councilman. I appreciate you sponsoring the ordinance because I think it's an important project. So thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
With the expansion, Mayor, I know from my understanding, we'll be able to host maybe some NCAA tournaments?
Yes, sir. We, one of the problems that we have, it's not a big problem, but it is a problem, is when we, the volleyball side, the girls and the guys hit it so hard that the ball hits the roof. And if we were a little bit higher on the roof, we wouldn't have that problem. And it is a distraction from these, especially these D1 teams that you're talking about, Councilman. So if we want to attract that kind of talent, we have to have a little bit more clearance on the roof. So what we would do is this new section would be volleyball only. We'd move the volley, we could still host volleyball in other parts of the sportsplex, but it's a taller roof, and we'd move them into this section, and it would allow us to host larger tournaments. And think about, this is just one more space. We could convert the whole thing over to a basketball tournament, or a volleyball tournament, or soccer, whatever we wanted to do. And right now, I know the sand volleyball courts have been relocated from where we built them, and it was the City Hammond Labor that built them. We kept the important part, which is the expensive sand, and we're relocating that behind the sportsplex as we speak, technically on the west side of the sportsplex. So thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Councilman.
Mr. Mayor, questions?
Zalinas.
According to the floor plan, some of the designs here, the soccer fields will be relocated to the front of the building, is that correct?
I could probably get Kim up here to explain exactly, because these change so often. Do you want me to, I mean, I believe she's here.
She is.
Hi, Kim. Hey, Kim, could you explain so I don't say something wrong? Do you mind? You can come up here, you can do it there, it's up to you. This is, this is Kim Roberts. She just got inducted into IU Hall of Fame, and she runs our sportsplex here. So congratulations, Kim. IU Northwest, technically, I don't want to misrepresent.
Thank you. So yes, the soccer courts will be relocated, or fields, to the front of the building.
Can I see a couple of, are they smaller fields, or what is our, what is our plan?
So it is going to be a 5v5 field, and then on the sides, it's going to be a 3v3. We're going to introduce some different aspects to soccer, as well as a food-sal program that we're going to do with the volleyball, basketball courts.
So we're getting rid of the current, the walls that are up?
Correct, there will be no more walls, it will be wall-to-wall turf.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, will you be willing to come back and explain that when we discuss this in caucus in two weeks?
Sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any further discussion?
Councilman Zalinas, this has all changed so much, I just wanted to bring up the experts. So, yeah.
Between sportsplex, the Y, and Shepherd Center, I've seen about 1,500 people this weekend.
Yeah.
And I signed my grandson up at the YMCA, and I looked at that stairmaster and thought about getting on it, so.
Yep, but you know, there's a lot of people here right now, and I want everybody to hear me. That whole area over there is performing really well, and it's, I know I get to stand on the stage and cut the ribbon, and that's wonderful about being mayor, but I want everybody to know, like, I could not do it without the cooperation of the body that I'm talking to right now. Like, it's a team effort. You guys are involved every step of the way. You give us the green light, and we go out and do it. So I want to thank you, because when I took over as mayor, that area was dead. It was a dying mall. And now you go over there, and the big complaint now is, I can't find a parking space, or there's cars parking in my neighborhood. Those are good problems they have, because we didn't have that problem 20 years ago. So thank you for your help, Council. I think we're pretty close to being done with that project, and this is just one more step in it. So thank you very much.
So the motion has been made and seconded for council as a whole at 5:15 on the 24th with a public hearing.
24th.
On the 24th.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion?
Pleasure.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I walk with my wife three times a week there, and it's amazing, and I want to thank Kim for what she's done there. It's great, and we walk three times a week. Sometimes I miss Fridays, but I do walk three times a week with my wife, Jeannie.
Councilman Emerson, there's thousands of Hammond residents, thousands of Northwest Indiana residents that participate in the walking program at the sportsplex, and we don't charge them. So I appreciate you bringing that up. That's a part that we don't talk about very often, is every day, the dozens or hundreds of people that go there just to walk. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Since we're putting it in committee, I don't believe we need a roll call, we can just do a voice vote. So all those in favor of putting this in the committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance 25-03, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance number 9643 of the City of Hammond, as it pertains to the classification of vehicles subject to the Municipal Vehicle Excise Tax pursuant to Indiana Code 6-6-5-2A.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
First and second reading, referred to council as a whole. Meeting set for February 24th, 2025, 5:15.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali.
Mr. President.
Seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I just want the public to know, this is not, this is a technical correction to the original ordinance that we already discussed. We took the original ordinance and approached the BMV with it, and they had two technical corrections to come back with you, and that's what's before you, is two classifications of vehicles that weren't discussed in our original ordinance. And I don't believe there's too many of those vehicles in Hammond, but you don't piss off the BMV, that's usually the rules I operate by. So we're before you with the technical correction, and that's what is this present ordinance, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Sorry, just for clarification, those, just so the public knows, those additional vehicles are mini trucks and military vehicles?
Yes, sir. Those are mini trucks and military vehicles, right. We didn't include those in the original ordinance, the BMV flagged us. And our ordinance didn't take place for, if you remember correctly, for another year anyway. So we have plenty of time. Well, I mean, I don't want to delay too long, but it wasn't like it was, time was of the essence. We found out about it, and we approached you with this, so.
Anybody else? Is that it? Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 11, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 25R-02, sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Tyler. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hammond authorizing the filing a Section 108 loan guarantee application and designating signatories for payment voucher on letters of credit for a Section 108 guarantee loan project.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
For final passage of 25R-02.
Motion's been made for passage of Resolution 25R-02.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
President?
Councilman Spitali.
As the, for the resolution, the authorization of the cement of two Section 108 loan application for the sportsplex expansion project.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, motion carries eight in favor, z, or one absent.
Item B, Resolution 25R-03, sponsored by Mayor McDermott. A resolution of the City of Hammond Common Council in support of the Governor's Parkway Railroad Overpass Project.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I'd like to, for, 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 final passage of Resolution 95R3.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Rakos.
I'd like to read it in its entirety, rather than having Kirk Golick have to do it. I'm willing to do that, if that would be okay?
That's fine.
I'll read it. Never mind. Resolution in the, of the City of Hammond Common Council in support of the Governor's Parkway Railroad Bypass Project. Whereas the Common Council of the City of Hammond acknowledges the valuable role railroads play in the nation's supply chain, while also recognizing the need to address the longstanding issue of numerous and lengthy train delays and accidents near any of the 53 at-grade railroad crossings throughout the city, which are particularly prevalent in the Hessville neighborhood of our city. And whereas over the last 100 years, railroad infrastructure has created hazards due to frequent crossings of railroad tracks by vehicles, pedestrians, increasing the risk of accidents, delays, and loss of life, and impacting the quality of life in our city. And whereas trains stopped within, within at-grade railroad crossings, including for prolonged, prolonged periods of multiple hours, inhibit travel not only for residents and visitors, but decrease rapid response times for emergency professionals, including EMS, fire, and police. And whereas, Federal Railroad Association creating the Railroad Crossing Elimination RCE program to provide funding for highway rail or pathway rail grade crossing improvements that focus on improving the safety and mobility of the people and goods. And whereas the RCE program awarded the City of Hammond $7,29,392 to eliminate two at-grade crossings where Parish Avenue and Arizona Avenue intersect with the Norfolk Southern Rail Line, and to build a grade-separated road overpass, a new road to be named Governor's Parkway. And whereas, the State of Indiana also created a local tracks rail overpass program aimed at improving safety and quality of life for residents through the large-scale related transportation projects, in which the City of Hammond was awarded $5,460,070 to further fund the Governor's Parkway project. And whereas, the Common Council passed ordinance number 9516 on September 27th, 2021, to appropriate American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds for the specific use under ARPA Section 603, including $3,570,000 for Governor's Parkway, Parkway Railway Overpass Project, conveying this council's prior and ongoing support of this project. And whereas the amount of ARPA funds appropriated to the project were later reduced to 2.5 million by ordinance number 9623, ARPA 3.0, passed by the Common Council on January 8th, 2024, because the amount of cities matched was lessened due to an increase in state and federal funds made available to the city for the project. And whereas the Indiana Department of Transportation provided legal notice of a public hearing to be held on April 26th, 2023, for the purpose of offering all interested persons an opportunity to comment on current design plans for the project in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations, Title 23, Section 771. And whereas local feedback was requested through community surveys targeted at those areas where Governor's Parkway would be utilized by residents and to identify issues and mitigate impacts, while enhancing transparency and building trust with the Hammond constituents. And whereas, over 600 responses were received via survey in which approximately 60% of respondents indicated they were impacted by stopped trains at least once per day. 83% of respondents somewhat strongly or very strongly felt that the City of Hammond needed to address this issue. 75% of respondents were somewhat or strongly in favor of a new bridge, and 63% of the respondents were somewhat or strongly in favor of the new bridge at the preferred location. And whereas environmental studies and engineering analysis were conducted, which indicated the proposed location of the Governor's Parkway project would not have negative impacts on wetlands and streams, floodways, historic properties, or noise increases. And whereas in effort to mitigate any disruption of the Briar East Woods, Indot and Hammond will find that the Student Conservation Association replant approximately 24 acres of trees, double the number of trees impacted by this construction. And whereas, above stated reasons, the City of Hammond Common Council shall resolve to continue support and endorse the implementa, implementation of the Governor's Parkway Railroad Overpass Project, which shall improve safety and quality of life for the Hammond residents and visitors alike. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Hammond hereby formally supports the Governor's Parkway Railroad Overpass Project and intends to commence construction of said project upon procurement of the awarded funds from the Indiana Local Tracks Rail Overpass Program and the Federal Railroad Administration Railroad Crossing Elimination Program. Be it further resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond that this resolution shall be in full force and effect, and after its passage by the Common Council, signed, signing of the president, and therefore, thereof approval of the mayor. Adopted and approved by the Common Council of the City of Hammond on this day.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mayor McDermott.
I want to point out to the assembled crowd that the City of Hammond has taken a number of steps along the way to get to where we are, an eight-year journey where we are right now. We've approached the council numerous times, we've approached the public numerous times, just like right now. This is not required by law. This is like a final check to make sure we're all on the same page from where I sit, because once you're in, we're sending this straight to Indot, because let's make no mistake about it. Right now, I have on my desk three letters from residents of Highland, Hobart, and Gary, writing letters actively right now to Indot to try to kill this project. I don't know if I'd ever find myself so bothered by a project in a neighboring city that I would send a letter to Indot to try to kill money for a project in their town. So what that Highland resident, and that Hobart resident, and that Gary resident are telling us is, don't take that free money, just keep living with those trains there. That's unacceptable. We have a bridge being paid for by federal and state money. We have no Hammond money in this project at all. It's basically 100% being covered by federal money and state money to take care of a problem that's existed in our city for 100 years. And I have a group of people with a straight face that are telling me to say no. Let me give you the ramifications if we say no, because I think it's the most foolish thing that we've ever done as a body. If you're telling me to say no, I think it's a humongous mistake. I think generations will laugh at this body if we say this is a bad idea. Generations of Hammond residents will laugh at us. I think it's a massive mistake that they're asking us to make. Massive. We need to fix it, we need to show unity right now, and that's why we floated this resolution. It's where the money meets the road. Let's go. I'm in. I got my construction vest on. Once you approve this, it's a green sign to me to secure our property and to get ready for construction. That's how I'm approaching it. This is Hammond property, and we're going to get ready for construction, because it's imminent at this point, so.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
From my understanding, there's some information in the council office that is pertinent to this conversation, so if you don't mind, I'll just go grab it for a second.
Is that pertaining to an email where someone from the public wants to add an amendment to this?
Yes.
We don't take amendments from the public on our resolutions.
I would like to read it just before we move forward. So I guess I'll make a motion.
I'm not telling you you can't go get it, go ahead and get it.
Well, I don't want you guys to move forward the vote without me, so I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for.
Can a person that's not even in the council chamber second a motion to delay the council meeting that she's not even a part of? Is that even legal?
Yes.
Is that, that's legal for a person that's sitting on her couch to delay a meeting in City Hall?
She has full voting rights in the meeting, man.
The motion's been made.
Mayor, if, there's a problem with me sitting at home, if I, I would be there if I did not fall down during the ice storm, I would be there in public. So excuse you for saying that. That was very insensitive.
The motion's been made and seconded for a five-minute recess. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Vanez.
No.
Kalwinski. Tyler. Emerson.
No.
Rakos.
No.
Warpo.
No. Let the record show, one, two, three, four, five. One in favor and five opposed. Motion denied. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you. I asked this during caucus, and it was just in regards to federal funds, with the state of what's going on in the country and the president saying about dollars. Is this going to be affected by the, with the federal dollars dealing with what he said about not being able to get funds and things like that? Do you know that answer?
Yes, it will not be affected. Governor's Parkway will not be affected.
Okay.
The pedestrian bridge.
The other question I asked.
The pedestrian bridge may be affected. This one, we have the money in hand.
Okay. So is there already plans for the pedestrian bridge, is my question, dealing with the kids?
That's a side, I don't want to talk about, that's something that has nothing to do with this resolution on the table. It's distracting, so I'm going to stay focused here on Governor's Parkway Bridge.
Okay, well then, can you do me a favor? Since you don't want to talk about it there.
Oh, you could, I could talk to you after the meeting, but you're not here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I explained why I'm not there. I got really hurt falling down some stairs.
I apologize.
And I just didn't appreciate you being insensitive when I would actually be there if I was not hurt. So, if you can, we can talk over the phone regarding it. I just want to know a little bit more information, and you're the main person that has that information.
No problem.
Thank you for being so rude today.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
No, Mr. President, I got attacked, I want to respond. I take it personally when you make $40,000 a year and you have a track record of not showing up to meetings. So alls you have to do is look at the attendance record, okay, and see the ones that are always doing Zoom, and then you can tell me, is it easy to talk to this particular council person? You make $40,000 a year to be here, $40,000 a year to be here for 24 meetings a year, $40,000. How many people in Hammond would take that job? Lots, okay? I can't talk to people that aren't here. I don't like Zoom. It's not the pandemic anymore.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson.
I was moved by, I'm on page three. Whereas in an effort to mitigate any disruption of Briar East Woods, Indot and Hammond will fund the Student Conservation Association, the SCA, to replant approximately 24 acres of trees, double the number of trees impacted by this construction. And I was pleased to hear this.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion?
Sorry, Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I'm sorry, when I was grabbing the packet, I, I think I missed Councilwoman Alexander's question, and it was in reference to the pedestrian bridge, is that correct?
That was my second question, but he's already said he wasn't going to answer that. that. And I asked if he would talk with me separately about it, but I don't think he will. And I wasn't trying to be any kind of way. If I was there, I would actually be there, but I don't miss meetings that often. And I, if I am on Zoom, and I would, I would take his comment as to you and I being on Zoom, but that's not the case here. And that's a sidebar, but again, if I could be present today, I would definitely be present. But if Mayor does not want to talk to me, that is perfectly fine.
Sorry, no. I didn't get a chance to answer, ask my question. My only question is, I know that we've had several conversations, and when we talk about the, the Governor's Parkway overpass, we also talk about the accompanying pedestrian bridge. So I guess my question is, I know that part of the complaints from the public is that the Governor's Parkway doesn't address the issue of kids climbing over the tracks, but in response to that, we did enter into this agreement or pursuing the pedestrian bridge that does solve for that, correct?
Sort of. I don't totally agree with your preposition, though. You led into it saying Governor's Parkway doesn't help people that walk. You basically said that, and I don't agree with that. But I think the pedestrian bridge, it's closer to Scott Middle School, is better. How about that? Okay, Councilman, I'm not trying to argue. But the pedestrian bridge that we had planned close to Scott Middle School is built for the kids when there's a stop train right there. Because the argument, Councilman Barry, is it's unrealistic to think a kid that lives in that neighborhood right by Scott Middle School is going to go all the way around Governor's Parkway to get to Scott Middle School. So that is accurate what you're saying. But it will help people on foot. It will help people on bike. It's just out of your way. Okay? So that's trying to answer your question, Councilman.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mr. President. We really, we really need to show unity. I hope the council could support me on this.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I call for the vote.
Motion's been made to call for the vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Rakos. Can I just ask, can you withdraw that motion because I'd like to say a few things on this issue too, because I can speak from the chair?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. I'm not quite understanding, does this address the pedestrian bridge? I don't get the logic of if it don't address the pedestrian bridge, then we should just send it all back and say, okay, if we can't have a pedestrian bridge, then we don't want the way for cars to get around through Hessville. So I know I went to gab it, but I don't quite understand that logic. Number two. I've not only lived in Hessville, I've worked in Hessville, and like I said, in the caucus, as long as I've been alive, trains have been a problem in Hessville. When I worked on Kennedy Avenue at the post office, there were times that I was on the street for 12 hours, had to wait for a train for an hour to get back to the office, and then had to sit in the post office parking lot waiting for the cars to go through, and I'm sitting there shivering. I'm not asking anybody to feel sorry for me. But I hear one side saying, trains aren't a problem no more in Hessville. What Hessville do you live in? Because they are a problem. So it's kind of disingenuous to say, well, trains aren't a problem no more. That, that problem's gone. Really? Like, like I've said, I got grandkids that live by Harding School. I go by their house every day. Is it a mirage I'm seeing when I'm stopped by the trains? Come on. So seven, eight years ago, we addressed the problem of trains being a problem in Hessville. And we found a way to fund it through a grant. And when I hear these people say, hold on, I got a better idea. Okay, maybe you do. But do you think we can go, hey, state, never mind what we just put in for, give us that $12 million and let us try a new project? So to delay a, that's two reasons they're saying delay the project. You're not addressing the pedestrian traffic. So we throw it all away, right? That's the logic I'm hearing. Number two, a few people don't like IRD. And you guys, you know, I've, I've sit here and listened and kept my mouth shut. I listen to people's opinions. Everybody's got a right to an opinion. But for them to tell me, we're your bosses and you're not doing what we say. I'm sorry. I walked my district in 2023. I know where that train stands as far as my constituents. And granted, I don't just represent my district only, but my district, it's overwhelming in, in favor of it. Maybe because between Kennedy Avenue and in, let's say, Osborne, a lot of people go that way to go to the mill. And like I said before, you want to talk about the environment? I sat in a post office truck for hours at a time, sometimes backed up to the other side of the bridge by van tells. I see nothing but exhaust running, exhaust fumes running. Is that good for the environment? Try to explain to your boss one time when a deer ran up the hill and breaks a mirror on your car, and they say, what happened to your vehicle? The guy got hit by a deer. How well you think that went over at the post office when he ran up the hill and hit a deer? I was sitting still and a deer ran up and hit me, and they're like, only this, this could only happen to you. But my point is, when I hear trains aren't a problem, or response times, or kids crossing the railroad tracks, I agree. Kids should not be playing or crossing over the trains. But is it come down to nine council people and a mayor have to tell parents how to raise their children? Seriously, is that what it's come down to? We got to say no because parents let their kids cross over the railroad tracks? And I hear, how are you guys going to? I'm going to feel horrible. And like I said two times, and I'll say it one more time. I don't know how many of you can say you sat in a car listening to your grandson on the phone because his dad is dying, and he's crying, saying something bad's going on here. My dad's sick. Get here, Grandma and Grandpa. Get here, Grandma and Grandpa, and I'm caught by a damn train. Don't tell me I don't give a shit about kids. That's all I got to say.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Okay. The reason I've read that because I, I just have so much, I tried to write it out today over the weekend. I just have so much to say about this situation. The residents in my district overwhelmingly want this train. They know they have a problem, I mean, this bridge for the, to avoid the train traffic in Hessville. It's been like that for decades. Before I even got on this council, I was leaving this city hall, walking with a woman in her twenties and a woman in her seventies, and the woman in her twenties told us, because no, trains are really bad in Hessville. I don't know. Is this something new? And we both, the woman in her seventies, I was in my fifties at the time, and you, no, it's been like that. A woman in her seventies, there's got to be almost 85 or 90 now. As long as there's been cars, train's a bit of a problem, especially in Hessville. It's the way it is. It's the way it will always be when they, and we've had talk with policemen and firemen that the other times where they say, hey, we'll take care of it. We won't do that. And then sometimes they will. They did for a little while, for a couple, for a couple of months. They'll, they'll slow down the train track, which means they could do it, but they didn't want to do it until, you know, they didn't do, they didn't care anything about until, you know, ProPublica puts it out on, on the news. They didn't care. Railroads don't care. My constituents, my, the people in my district deserve to have this thing. It's for safety. I was a fireman for 36 years. Yes, I've seen people hit by trains. I've seen what trains can do to bodies. I have seen that on the fire department. And if we don't have safety as, as the number one reason why we're doing this, if, if that's not an issue over some trees that are going to be replanted, then I don't know what is. Yes. We need this bridge that's being provided for us for free. The state and the feds are paying for it. We've been discussing this for years.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Councilman Salinas.
I just would like to say that as Hammond's second district representative, I've consulted my precinct committee members as well as my neighbors and friends in our neighborhood, and we wholeheartedly support this Governor's Parkway project and also support Councilman Rakos and Councilman Warple, whose district this project surrounds.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just, just have a few quick things to share too. I think that what's happening here is like there's facts versus like opinions. And I, I think that is kind of what we're getting hung up on. And I know that trains are a problem. I don't think anybody within our city would disagree with that statement. But some of the facts that I want to clear up, and I think Mayor, you've touched on this tonight, and I think this resolution has touched on it too, but the fact is there is no Hammond, like Councilman Rakos just said, there's no Hammond money for this project. So we are getting this fully funded by outside sources, which I think is a great thing. I know that the current project would take away 12 acres out of the 32 acre dunes, right? But as a part of this project, we are recommitted to planting two dozen acres worth of trees in the, the area surrounding the project. And I know that there's arguments in terms of the current ecosystem that we are demolishing to build the bridge and how the new addition of these trees doesn't solve for that. But I do think there is some silver lining in that, and, and I think it does show our commitment to our city and, and to the environment. And I will hope that the people who oppose this, if it does pass tonight, if we do move forward with it, will come together with us, have conversations with us in determining where those trees go, having that conversation, and how we can better utilize other green spaces in our community to provide some of the preservation that they are so hard fighting for, as they have been for the past couple of years. I do want to commend the folks who have stood up here and spoken out because it is hard. I know it's tough. It takes courage to come up here and speak on issues. And I know all of us don't agree with everything that has been said. I know there, once again, has been some misinformation, but I do just want to say that these people are just stepping up and speaking on something that they wholeheartedly believe in. And as a black man in this country, I have to commend that, and I wish more people would step up and fight for things that they believe in, and especially in what I believe has been not a volatile way for the most part over these past couple of years. The other thing I want to just touch on is, you know, I, when I think about the historical significance or the argument of the historical significance of these dunes, I know that we are only touching a portion of it. So hopefully, there's, there's still room for people to enjoy the dunes after this bridge is, is built. And hopefully, also, we spent a lot of time talking about this, so maybe more people will come out, and maybe we'll be able to get the rest of the woods marked as a historical landmark or something like that. Like hopefully this just starts that conversation so that we can preserve it. I'm somebody who also cares a lot, once again, about the environment. I saw somebody saying this was environmental racism. I don't understand how that is the case. From my understanding, if you look at the rest of the, and Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at the rest of the proposed alternatives, this is the, the plan that touches the least amount of homes in terms of removing, removing places where people actually live. And to me, when we have to rank taking someone's home versus eliminating a few acres of trees, my heart has to go with the people in the residence. And that's why when I reviewed all of the proposed alternatives, this one is the one that does make the most sense. So sorry I've spoken so much, just wanted to go on record to share that. And once again, thank everybody here for showing up tonight in support of this and everybody who showed up in opposition of it too, who are downstairs couldn't make it in. Just thank you for expressing your opinions on such an important issue.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
We just got sucked in to their conversation. We passed an ordinance on September 27th, 2021, to move forward with this. We have listened to all of the reasons why the group is in opposition to this bridge. We've listened for how many years now? We just got sucked into their conversation. We voted on it. We passed it. Case closed. The only reason for this- The only reason for this resolution tonight is to make absolutely clear beyond a shadow of a doubt that we passed the ordinance back in 2021. That, that was the purpose of this.
And allocated the funds.
Yes. And so everyone could see when we passed it, when, when the public hearing was held, that was the purpose of this. So, Mr. President, I call for the vote.
Councilwoman Alexander had a comment she'd like to make, and then-
Oh, right.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick comment.
I'm a minute.
One, I never said I didn't agree, I didn't agree with, didn't agree with the bridge because it's going to help our public safety officers get where they have to go. The only question that I, other than what I did ask was, can we also find another solution to figuring out something dealing with the kids? That's it. That was not for us to have a whole, whatever that just was. That was literally for some clarity and getting answers, and the only person that can give us those answers is Mayor. So I want to the public, my apologies, but again, I'm sorry that I am home. If I could be there, I would probably, I will be there in person with you all. So thank you for that.
Okay, a motion's been made to call for the vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Clerk Golick, call for the vote.
Alexander.
Yeah.
Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Motion carries.
I also vote yes. Please record my vote.
Those Hessville guys got to stick together.
All right, yes, that's right.
Motion carries, eight in favor with one absent. Call for the vote. Roll call on the vote.
Alexander.
Spitali. Yes, okay.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show the motion carries eight in favor, one opposed, one more. Councilman Tyler, take a five-minute break so those that were downstairs can come upstairs now for-
Are you serious?
I got to pee.
I'm making motion. We're taking a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess. Thank you. I entertain a motion to resume the meeting.
Make a motion.
I need a motion? Huh? A motion's been made. Is there a second? Seconded, seconded, somebody seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to resume the meeting. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Ricos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Motion carries, eight in favor, one absent. Next item on the agenda, new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business? Nobody has any new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. You have three minutes to say whatever you want. I hope we can refrain from the applause so we can get through this list.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanez.
There's a sign on the wall that there are no hats in the council chambers. I request everyone to remove their hats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First person on the list, and please state your name and your address. Andrea Centers. Andrea Centers.
She's downstairs. She's downstairs. I'll speak on that. Yeah.
Next item, next person on the list is Joseph Hines.
Yeah, they were told they could speak from the Zoom.
Is there a microphone down there for them to speak?
There is, Councilman. Yeah, I've asked them to unmute.
Kind of turning it into a Purdue is
Microphone has been unmuted.
Very well. But at least they don't use toxic chemicals, and so he's got a lot better, they have a lot better chance to survive.
Can you repeat the last statement? It sounds like she was in the middle of a sentence.
They, it looks like they just went back on mute down there. I'm asking them down mute again.
They can, they're welcome to come up. That's what we took the five-minute break for. Was that it from Andrea Centers? Was that everything?
Their conversation.
Is anyone down here
I think everyone who came upstairs wants to speak. The people down here, I contend with being down here.
Did you sign up for public expression? Did you? No one down here is a talk.
Okay, they do not want to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on a second. 10 seconds, we'll get this going. So, is there a, nobody downstairs, it's my understanding, nobody downstairs wants to speak. So, is Joseph Hines up here? Is Joseph Hines up here?
He was downstairs.
They just said nobody downstairs wants to speak. Okay, the next one on the list is, I think it's Elaine Fuentes. Please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Elvia Fuentes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elvia Fuentes. My address is 3238 170th Place, Hammond. Okay?
Okay, good.
Just for the record, thank you. Just for the record, I would like, I want to firmly restate that the protest against the governance park rail overpass project had the support of the Hammond and Hessville community. And it should go down in the history from the moment it was announced back in 2017 to the present time as a community movement in the protection and conservation of the Briar East Woods in Hessville. Thank you.
Next side, next person to speak is Ken Rosick. Ken Rosick's still here. Next person to speak is Paula Taylor. Paula Taylor's still here. Next person to speak is Mary Lavanne.
Mary Lavanne, 7406 Jackson Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, a 96-year resident of Hammond, and I thoroughly hope that we can save Briar East Woods. Whatever you do, conserve that dunes. So important. I hate to lose it, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Next person on the list is David Matur, or Dave Matura. Hang on one second, let me get this right. Go for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dave Matura, 2130 Superior Avenue, Whiting, Hammond, Indiana. It's interesting, because I had my thoughts written down and what I was going to say, and then I listened to the mayor talk, and, boy, he just threw me for a loop, because he just found things amazing, that what would these people be doing here? Why do these people have genuine concerns? Why would they come before their city council? Why would people from out of the city have concerns? Well, because it's bigger than just the city. It's about our environment. We talk about the quality of life. We talk about sewer water going to the rivers, which the mayor is, he's all for it. So, what do we mean? We mean Gibson Woods. Gibson Woods is green. Gibson Woods has not been touched by any, I'm sorry, Briar East Woods has not been touched by anyone. It's there to absorb the rainwater. It's there to absorb the CO2. It's there to produce oxygen. It's there for the health of the residents, both in the city and outside of the city. I've had people argue with me, oh, there's studies that you need to develop this, you need to develop that. All the periodicals and magazines I read says you need green space for the health and quality of your citizenship. This is someplace that people in the city can go and relax, see nature, see biodiversity. By the way, oh, we've lost 30% of our bird population. I wonder why? Well, we're going to cut 30% of the trees down. Oh, but we'll plant them somewhere else on some parkway. You know what? The city of Hammond planted trees by my house along the Clarkfield-Georgelake bike path. They planted eight trees. Three years later, two are alive.
You got one more minute, I'm sorry, that goes up, why not?
So, again, I ask you, you already voted, so it's sort of in the rearview mirror, but the mayor said, you know, if we don't get this bridge, the next generation's going to say, what were they thinking? No, no, no. The next generation's going to say, what were they thinking? They cut down our trees, they cut down our woods, they took away the quality of life. Oh, so that I wouldn't be inconvenienced by a train. So that's what the legacy's going to be. Not that you built the bridge, but that you robbed the future generations of something that has been there, time immortal. I would say, please don't vote for the, for the bridge, but you know where I stand. Please don't vote for the bridge.
Thank you. Since I saw some people come in, is Andrea Jo Centers here?
Yeah. Hey, I'm Andrea Jo Centers. Does it matter?
It don't matter.
Andrea Jo Centers, 6804 Idaho Avenue, Hammond. Not only all of the other outside issues that everybody else is bringing up, I recalled having that seven inches of rain in seven minutes, and that water runs north, and all the water that the dunes absorb make me wonder, because I'm on that first block, am I going to have to get flood insurance now? Also, because that's going to have nothing to absorb the water, and where will the animals be that will be displaced from having to be out of their homes? And that really comes home to me, because I do love the animals, and I do enjoy walking my dogs in those parks, and I've met a lot of people there that I have not been able to, because, as I said, I am disabled, and it's hard for me to get to a place where they have a nature thing, and I didn't understand why we couldn't just turn that into like what Sandridge Nature Center did, and make it a learning thing for the kids and the adults alike coming in, and have a flyer in the tourist place when people park in there to, where they can come and enjoy some fishing or other activities that people do on their beach. And that's all I got. Thanks.
I'm having a fit with this clock. Hang on a second.
Do, 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 do.
Nope. You're in. Please state your name and address.
Hello, Council. My name is Joseph Hines. I live at 703 114th Street in Robertsdale. The illusion of progress. Tonight, Hammond City Hall stages its spectacle called "A Parkway." But let's be clear, this isn't infrastructure. It's a wrecking ball aimed, aimed at Briar East Woods, a 4, 4,700-year-old ecosystem that survived glaciers, industrialization, only to be bulldozed for what we all know is going to be luxury subdivisions. And now here, we have a new data center coming up on our lakeshore, right by the Bird Sanctuary. How does our council respond to a 2,000 petition signature demanding transparency? By barricading democracy? Tonight, they've stacked City Hall with cronies, shoved dissenters into a basement, and called it a public meeting. This isn't governance, it's a coup against the people. Councilmembers, you claim this overpass will ease train delays, yet your own FOIA release maps reveal the truth. 68 residential lots and commercial zones carved into the heart of our ancient dunes. Cheaper fixes, like elevated tracks even, were dismissed. But why? Because your donors, your developers crave Lake McMansions, not solutions for working You starve our parks, label them blight, then sell the corpse to the highest bidder. Meanwhile, you siphon funds into vanity projects while closing the Woodmar YMCA, leaving families there without community anchors. You're torching 32 acres of Black Oak Savannah, Red Tailed Hawks Nest, and a 4,700-year-old dune ridge, all to build a future where only the wealthy breathe clean air. Too busy rubber-stamping utility hikes to fight for the people who elected them. But we see your game. You think locking us in basements and staging sham hearings will keep us docile. The Hessville Dune Dusters, 1,700 strong, have hauled out tires, furniture, and corporate trash to reclaim this land, and will haul out your corruption, too. When your grandchildren ask why a 4,700-year-old shoreline died for a traffic shortcut, what will you say?
Please state your name and address.
My name is Paula Taylor, 7434 Magoon Avenue in Hammond. I'm really new to this, I actually didn't know that we had this beautiful area, and I was familiar with Gibson Woods, but progress, if you're not breathing, if you don't have the oxygen that is supplied by the trees, or the carbon dioxide that takes, is taken up by the plants. These are big trees. You cannot just say, we'll plant some more trees. These are trees that are older than I, and I'm one of the, I grew up in the 50s in the neighborhood, right down the street. And we had nature, wildlife. I'm old enough to remember insects that are no longer. I remember butterflies everywhere. We'd see a cabbage butterfly and say, oh, it's just a cabbage butterfly. Now I think, oh, my gosh, there's a butterfly. And so, and I raised butterflies. Do I release them? I find them here, I live here, I live in Woodmar. Do I release them in Hammond? I don't think they're going to have a real good chance here. So where do I go? I go to Valparaiso, to the arboretum, the one that Purdue owns now. It's called Gabus. It used to be Tall Tree. Now they've turned this into a win-win situation. Win-win, because they've gone there. The attendance has increased. They have courses, they have seminars, they have studies, and the people who live there, they have oxygen. Can you replace those trees that have been there forevermore? And so, it is a thought. I grew up in Hammond, downtown Hammond. Yeah, they put a bridge up. Guess what? Everyone went to Illinois, started shopping at this shopping center by the time that bridge was up there. You see, time goes on. People progress. Yes, business must go onward, but if we can live with it and be healthier as a consequence, that is what matters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Rosick, is Ken Rosick here? Is Ken Rosick here? Okay, that's twice I've called him. Daphne Reyes? Daphne Reyes?
Good evening, elected officials.
Please state your name and your address.
Lizette Montanez, 1940 Warwick Avenue, Whiting, Robertsdale, Hammond. I, it's incomprehensible what just happened here, a vote, eight yeses. We live in an industrial strip. I particularly live by the BP Cargo. I'm getting hit from all directions. They get tax breaks, though. And we smell, everything is foul around here these days. You would destroy a wooded area that has thousands of living organisms there with no voice, that cannot speak something beautiful. Look at it from aerial view. We elected you, some of us in the room, and we count on you not to sit there and do someone else's bidding. This bridge might be funded, state, some federal, but it is, in fact, funded by Hammond, all of Hammond, not just Hessville should have a say. And we have people here from other cities. We have Illinois reporting on the safety issue for those children that are jumping those trains, and that's not going to end. You guys are not going to be well-known for something good. This is not good. I particularly believe in God and the aerial view, okay? Right here, that he must see, that you guys would be so destructive. You got a whole Lorax movement going on here.
going on here, and they want to save trees, something good, something my Lord would want us to preserve. And you guys would sit here and play this monopoly. What is it for? What good is coming from this? In fact, you would talk about people that are sitting here and call, not you, but they were called names. And I happen to have worked for Local 399, a union that taught us to represent protest. We fight for what's right, and they have a voice. They are community. You are here to represent them and listen to them, not sit there and play on your phone. And it's some of your last days here because they will be voting you out. Thank you.
Can we control this? Next up, Cindy Murphy. Time's up. You missed it.
Cindy Murphy, 6838 Colorado. I'd like to thank the council for staying here late and making sure everybody that wanted to be heard could be heard. And I'm going to piggyback on something that someone said earlier. Where are the butterflies? Specifically, I want to say, where are the bumblebees? So I grow verbena in front of my office. It's only about two miles maybe away from there. I didn't see one bumblebee this summer, not one. So what we need to do with this project, and it's a great project, and I'm here for it. I live in Hessville. We need health and safety. I'm not going to go over it again because you guys have all heard it. You get it. You want to put in the infrastructure improvements in my area and improve the quality of life. Well, I want your great project to become excellent. So the way to do that is being in there and planting the native plants, bringing back our pollinators. So Indot had this big plan out there, and I see grass, a tree here or there, retention ponds. No, counsel, I'm going to ask you, tell them, "Don't plant any of that Kentucky blue. You want to plant prairie mix." And not just any prairie mix. You want early, mid, and late summer. So our pollinators have food the whole time. I heard in another time someone saying, "We've got one black oak." That happens to be my favorite tree, black oak. I don't want to see one black oak there. You need a stand of black oak. Again, food for the animals. People talk about the hawks. Well, you need the mice, the voles, the squirrels for those. This is about habitat restoration. And when you start restoring the habitat, it improves the quality of life because those butterflies will come back. The hummingbirds are going to come back. We're going to hopefully see the bumblebees come back. So I'm going to ask you, counsel, make this an excellent project. Put some water sources in there. Let's see some community gardens. Oxbow Park, you did an excellent job. You restored a wetland. Let this be a restoration project here in Hessville and improve the quality of life. So I know this stuff is expensive, so I'm asking you to ask Indot, what is the money they've got into it? We may have to do like a five-year plan and say, "Hey, these retention ponds, let's make them water gardens at some point," but you can't do it all at once. So I need the people behind me who are saying, "No, this is terrible. Don't take any trees down," to stand up and say, "We're going to restore this. We're going to restore the habitat, and we're going to make this an excellent project, which is going to be for the residents in Hessville for years on end." Thank you.
I don't know. I can't do that. I can't really read this name. Is somebody here from 3311 176th? Leave it to me. I got the clock set all wrong, by the way.
My name is Joyce Gredzayner.
Hang on one second. Go for it.
And I live at 3311 176th Street, Hammond, Indiana. With the destruction of the dunes, I think it is wrong. You're destroying history. Everybody in the city of Hammond knows how to get around a train. I know for a fact that if you hear that where I am at, I hit 8094, I go straight down Klein Avenue. You know how to do this. You were born and raised in this city. The next issue is, you did a wonderful job at Oxbow Park. We have eagles. The other day, I actually watched two juveniles down at Dowling Park. You want the expansion? Save the dunes. Where are they going to go? Are you going to put up walls for them and say, "You only get this section"? This is what we give you, which is wrong. Our nature is vital to us. When's the last time that any one of you see a salamander at your house? Oh, good for you, but I haven't seen one in over 20 years plus. Devote the time and energy to our dunes because if you don't take time to listen to your people, you will not be sitting in here any longer.
Hannah Watts. Give me one second, please.
My name is Hannah Watts. I live at 7138 Lindberg in Hammond, Indiana, 46323. My late grandfather was a city council member. Some of you might have even known him, Clifford Watts. I will make this brief and direct. I am a lifelong resident of Hammond. I was a 21-year resident of Hessville until my late mother passed, who herself was a lifelong resident of Hammond. My grandparents were a lifelong resident of Hammond. I live in the house that my great-grandparents built in this city. When I think about my future, I want to stay in Hammond. But when I hear McDermott say that people will be laughing at them, laughing at you if you do not take this decision, I think about what I'm going to tell my children when they have no breathable air in this city, when I can't recommend that they stay here in the long term, when I can't even recommend myself staying in here in the long term, and the absolute disregard and disrespect that I am seeing right now from my constituents right now, especially you, Councilwoman Vincennes, who has been playing on your phone and staring daggers at every person who has walked up to this pulpit today. I am disgusted by the people that I have chosen to vote into here. I will say this. I would love to raise my children in this city because there are a lot of things that I love about this city and I love about Northwest Indiana. And I think about our neighbors to the east and the kind of tourism they've gotten from their natural resources and not expanding on that and just seeing short-sighted capital gains like the rest of this godforsaken country right now that is cutting down on our ecosystem and just whatever. And it makes me think, "You don't care." I'm going to outlive all of you, and I will still be here when you are all long gone. And my children, my grandchildren, God forbid I am able to have grandchildren, will not look kindly on this decision. Thank you.
Ken Davidson. Ken Davidson. Kelly Hattick. Kelly Hattick. Okay. Judy Frazier. Judy Frazier. Mary Trevino. Mary Trevino. Lisa, I want to say Steyanovich, maybe? Is that right? No? Lisa Steyanovich. Mary Scallions? Does that sound right? S-C-L-I-O-N-S. I tried. I stated before I went to Gabbit and never passed an English class. How do you pronounce your last name?
Jones.
I was close.
It rhymes with Jones. Yeah. Okay. Hi. Hi. My name is Mary Jones, and I live at 3945 Wabash Avenue in Hammond. And while I am not against bridges and I am not against train delays, nobody likes to be stuck by trains. This isn't about a train delay. This is a power grab because the city wants to build fancy new houses in old growth forests. And that's what it's all about. And it's being disguised as this other thing. Why is it that creatures who can't speak for themselves are surrounded by people who insist that if they could speak, they would want to be killed or cut down? Trees and animals always bear the burden and the brunt of our human greed. Briar East Woods has been around here 2,000 years before the birth of Christ, and 2,000 years after his death, we are debating, or we had debated, well, debated, on whether to get rid of something that's really special in the city. And when the trees are gone and the part and the basements in Hessville start filling with water because we got rid of our natural flood abatement systems, well, we can just wait another 4,000 years for it to recover. We are creative people. We can do better than this. You know, God knows, we can put it, we can, we can put an overpass over so many other places in the city. You know, God knows we have enough empty giant parking lots around here that we can put an overpass over. But instead, we're putting it over something really nice in the city. And I'm really sorry that you got, that you got rid of it. You got rid of this. And the trees that will be replanted, I've seen some of the replanning, you know, one of somebody else in Comit, like when you go out to Wolflake, I've seen like the replanning of trees. They need to be replanted again. We can do better, and hopefully one day we will do. Thank you.
Next up, Mike Oles. Mike Oles. O-L-E-S. Next up, is it Michaela Spangenberg? Say that again. I'm sorry.
I'm amazed you can make out my handwriting that well. That's very impressive.
Thank you.
That's the most impressive thing I've seen tonight.
You're on.
Perfect. Thank you. My name is Dr. Michaela Spangenberg. I live at 1619 West 20th Avenue, Gary, Indiana. And I say that without any fear or shame or endorsement of strange propaganda about terrible things we're allegedly trying to do to you guys. Gary Education Coalition also. A good deed married to a harmful deed is not a good deed. You have children being hit by cars at an increasing rate because the individuals who sought the favor of certain individuals in this city, who were part of the last school administration, maybe part of the last board, functionally terminated your transportation for your youngest and most vulnerable children. And immediately, members of your community came forth and appealed to you and to your executive branch and your administration and all the folks for help to address this in any way, shape, or form, just to save lives. That help has not been meaningfully forthcoming. And instead, we're now seeing a small carrot of help, maybe like a baby carrot, being attached to something that clearly many people in your community do not want. Unity is not about conformity. Unity is about consensus building, and that means everybody. It doesn't mean doing just the bidding of one person, or nine people, or 10 people, or 700, or 25,000. It means your whole city of roughly 70,000 people. Seventy-six, actually. Yes, thank you for the correction. Seventy-six and change, or 75, or 79. You have a lot of people. They're not being represented. And we still live, thankfully for now, and we should continue to continue to fight, to live in a situation in which we have the right to vote, and we have the ability to participate in what we term a representative democracy. I get the sense that your voters are getting tired. The facade of helplessness, of powerlessness wears thin when the whole job of this governing body is to act as a check and balance, not an enabler. And you're well within your rights. If you discover down the line that something legally or financially is not right, you're well within your rights procedurally and legally to revisit this issue. And I encourage you to, because one of the most disturbing things I witnessed tonight was the fact that we had unanswered questions about funding. Thanks.
TJ. TJ. Is it Gerding-Gerting? I tried. Let me get the clock right, okay?
Oh, no, yeah.
Go for it.
Gerthig.
Thank you.
Well, that was kind of disappointing. But, you know, the parade was fun, so. I wanted to say, I wanted to give my best wishes to Katrina. I know she fell down a flight of stairs with the ice, and I know she's hurting. So I hope, I hope she didn't get a headache from getting yelled at for that. But, yeah, so I made this for you guys. I'm glad it made it out to you technically before the vote. Thank you for reading it out. I wonder, I guess, I wonder if the, if the city administration had been forthcoming to you guys about this project and told you, "All right, guys, we have, we have several options, but we have one option where we go through the forest, and then we also do a pedestrian bridge on Grand Avenue. It'll cost us four and a half million dollars." You know, because the pedestrian bridge costs $7 million. The overpass that Indot researched on the same road costs $8 million. Can you imagine if we had just gone with that? I mean, how simple this would be? And when you guys voted to approve the, the funding for this, Al, you're off the hook for that, but the rest of you, I mean, how many, how many questions were asked? Did you guys know about the alternatives? Have you guys asked, since you guys just got funding for the pedestrian bridge, have you guys asked if it could be transferred to a bridge that costs just a million dollars more on the same road that would solve the emergency transportation, that would solve kids walking to school, that would solve people getting blocked by trains on the way to work? And then you'd be able to make a park out of a 4,300-year-old dune, so. I don't know. I guess, you know, I'm kind of disillusioned because a lot of you personally cheered me on that, you know, we're doing the right thing and keep on going. And a lot of the other people in the group said, "TJ, they're playing you. TJ, they're fooling you. TJ, don't believe them." And I really stuck up for you guys. I was like, "No, they just, they just want more facts on the project. No, they're actually listening to us when we're doing public expression." And I mean, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sandy, I can't read the last name from Hobart. Is that O'Brien?
Sandy O'Brien, 5500 South Liverpool in Hobart, Indiana. And I am here because I'm always in favor of saving land for nature, and I've been doing it my whole life. And people in Hobart appreciate all the land that's been saved for nature preserves in Hobart. And it actually, I think, improves the quality of life in Hobart enough that it's been worth doing. You know, that's, quality of life is something really important, and we're not, you can't make dunes like the dunes at the Briar East Wood Dunes. And there's wetland attached to the dunes and in the same path that would be destructed by the, the bridge plan. But all this, there are alternatives. It makes a lot of sense to just rethink and redo the project on, on Grand Avenue where it makes more sense. And to save the woods, the oak trees are over 100 years old. You can't get those. You can't get those, you can't plant trees now and get 100 years old trees tomorrow. You got to wait 100 years. And this is a place that can be restored, and I'm a botanist, and they had me come and look at it, and I made a report, which maybe you've seen or not, but it is worthy of saving, and it can be restored so that it has the butterflies and the bumblebees and everything. Right now, it's a little shady, like all places that haven't been managed as nature preserves. You get too many trees and shrubs, and then the ground layer doesn't have sun, and then you don't have flowers. So it can be managed and restored, and it seems to have a big fan base, this wood, so it won't be neglected. So I appreciate you, council, all staying for public comment. I think that's very commendable. Sort of shocking that the mayor doesn't come to city, to public input, but I guess that's the way it was, it is in Hammond. In Hobart, that doesn't happen, as far as I can tell. I've been an activist in Hobart as well. Thank you.
Kathleen Strain? Here we go again. I'll get there. No Kathleen Strain? Joseph Kahn?
My name is Joseph Kahn. I live at 910 Lake Street in Hobart, and I bet you're wondering why somebody from Hobart is coming up here meddling in your affairs. And the reason is this. I've lived in Northwest Indiana all my life. I was born in Gary. I lived out in the Brunswick neighborhood, which is adjacent to Hammond, as you all know, and I lived at 752 Matthew Street, which was just, just a little bit, half a block north of 8th Avenue, and if you're familiar with that neighborhood, just south of 8th Avenue is a very long stretch between Burr Street and Clark Road of a, of a dune remnant, just like the one that's at issue here today. And I can tell you, as a boy, my brother and I, who went on to become a dentist, and he was into science, and I became a journalist for 38 years, I lived in wonder, running around in those dunes. We made tree forts in the trees, and we had foxholes in the sand, and we went sled riding down those hills, and they were, they were like our, our private park, and so every kid in the neighborhood, and we had lots of kids, we could get a football team up in those days in the baby boom, we had a football game up two sides, 11 sides, and one block. So I, obviously, I'm in favor of you guys saving this, this area. I don't think you really realize, because you're all older, the wonder in a boy playing in nature that way, so close to home. So I know the die is cast, I sat downstairs and listened, but if you had an opportunity to rethink your position on this, or you have any other opportunities like this, I'd like you to think about the children in this community being able to roam free in a woods close to their home. And I, one, appreciate you taking the time to spend here this evening. I covered council meetings all over Northwest Indiana at the county and the C level when I was a reporter for the Post Tribune, and, for 20 years. And I appreciate what you do. I really sincerely do. And I would only suggest that perhaps you might have this public hearing before you vote next time. Thank you very much.
Leslie Pulis. State your name and address, please.
Hi, Leslie Pulis, 207230 Olcott in Hammond. I am a clinical psychologist. It has been my life's work to help people in our community surrounding their mental health. When we look across generations of mental health accessibility, when we look across cultural and ethnic lines surrounding mental health, I think we all have to recognize that accessibility and ease of access to natural resources are shown to increase positive mental health outcomes. We've spoken a lot today about finances, we've spoken a lot today about saving nature regarding ecology and longevity. But we have a sincere crisis surrounding mental health across generations, across cultures. We have a really diverse population here in Hammond, and when you actually start looking on a more macro scale, we see that people of color are left out from the nature discussions surrounding mental health, and much of that is because they have been deemed urban. Urban woodland, when people of color have access to it, regularly display lower, lower instances of depression, lower instances of anxiety, lower instances overall surrounding, lower instances surrounding impulsivity. And when we look across the board at what all of those play into, it helps our community in safety overall. Impulsivity, depression, anxiety are highly correlated with violence. And so I think reconsidering or understanding the importance of having a low threshold to access actual nature, this is, the research does not include city parks. It, it, it means nature, not grass. I really hope that you consider what this does generationally for the mental health of our population.
Thank you. Finally, Councilman Higgs. Anthony Higgs.
Anthony Higgs, 1123 Moore Street, Hammond, Indiana. Former councilman for 16 years, precinct commitment for over 30 years, devoted and committed to this city. From being a former councilman and seeing the outcry of the constituents of the city, I would advise you all to listen to them, they are crying out. I sat in the seat for the third district councilman for 16 years, and I was victimized on several occasions for things that I didn't do, this shouldn't have happened. Needless to say that the reality of it is, is that the people are crying out, and hear what they're saying. God bless.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Rosak, I noticed you stepped back in the room. You want to speak?
Greetings, council. It's nice to see everybody here tonight. One thing I just noticed, somebody is reporting that there's no video of this being held right now. I don't know if that's true or not, but it is, okay. I just want to make a couple of comments. Somebody mentioned that this is not a bad project, that it's a restoration project. That's not the case. This is a destruction project, okay? There's not going to be anything left. Hundreds of old oaks are going to come down. 4,700-year-old dunes, a geological gem in the center of our city, is going to be destroyed. Okay, now you say it's for public safety? Let's go back a ways and figure out how this all started. If you remember, it was just going to be a, a bridge to address our public safety issues. Nobody got to see the design for three years, not until we demanded it. And then when it was finally released through a city survey that was very disingenuous, that made it look like a bicycle path going through the woods, everybody realized this was going to do nothing for the public safety issue that they had under grant application, absolutely nothing. And then the FRA told us that the mayor knew this project was not going to solve the problem, but they pushed it anyway. Our councilman pushed it. Councilman Raycoz said that there was going to be access for the children. There's no access. Ground zero is Grand Avenue. Okay, Grand Avenue crossing. This bridge is too far, and we all knew it. That's why the pedestrian bridge is going in now. We have tripled the amount of the cost of this project because somebody wanted the development and used an excuse of public safety. Councilman Vines, you said, be careful what you ask for. You know what we asked for? We wanted a solution on Grand Avenue to solve the problem with kids and students, teachers, and emergency vehicles on Grand Avenue. That is what the Federal Railway Administration recommended, but it was rejected by the mayor. Be careful what you ask for. This bridge creates a one-to-two-minute diversion to every single emergency response. So if your ambulance or police officer doesn't show up for another minute or two, be careful what you ask for, because that's exactly what this bridge does. It is a detour. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to take a motion to adjourn.